Called a meeting, the order, this is the meeting of the Council, Cape Canaveral City Council. It's December fifteenth at six P M. in the City Hall. Uh, open the meeting up, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Raymond, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, and to the Constitution, and to the Constitution.
Thank you. Hey, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Cullen? Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Okay, our first, uh, other only thing is we have a participation, oh, no, I'm sorry, we have public participation first. Uh, I have one card on public participation, and it is just open issue, Ms. Clark.
Hi, thank you, uh, this is my eighty five. Cape Canaveral Mobile Estate Park, um, there's been constant issues of flooding that becomes a lake, and it's, um, really creating a lot more problems. The trailer is, um, in the park. A lot of it is because, uh, in an Atlantic gap when the road was redone about seven years ago, there was no proper drainage put in. And when that happened, what it did, it made all the water run down the hill. Because the, the, the North Atlantic's here, and the road that curves around slants down like a slide, so it's just like taking a bucket of water and just putting it down the slide. So it all runs down, down the hill and just sits there. So it's like a lake. I actually have pictures here, and I did wipe my phone with, um, alcohol, so if you wanted to take some pictures at the pictures, you can realize it turns into a lake. Now, the problem is it's getting worse and worse. Um, it's actually kind of like a, uh, almost a two-step problem. The city, the road, it's above us, causing ninety percent of the problem. The other part is the owner's problem, because the drainage that he has here is, is, I don't think makes it move quick enough, too. You know, so it's a two-step problem, but the biggest problem is coming from North Atlantic itself. Like I said, it's like taking a bucket of water and just throwing it down the slide, and it just sits there. And now, when I tell you, it's ridiculous that, um, when I step out on my grass after days, it's squish. It has created mold issues in a lot of these mobiles. It has also created, um, the trip mobiles to stop moving that I had to, I have a preseason push off of mine, that I've actually had to, um, we seal, um, where it connects together, because it starts to leak, because the mobiles start to shift, because it's so wet. It's like living almost on a swarm now. Now, had it been brought to the attention of the homeowner? Absolutely, I took some pictures the first time, because it was a fairly new owner, he had only, only four years. And, um, I told him, I said, this, your place is turning into a lake, and you're gonna need to do something. And he told me, um, to see the manager in the park, which is named Phil. And I did, and he said, that's not our problem, that's the city's problem. Um, and, uh, also, I can't, every time we have issues with the manager and stuff like that, that we, we, we've asked the owner when we have seen him, if we have a direct contact to mail him something, and he says, um, the only direct mail, mail contract you will get is to send it to the manager at the park. We have set certain situations to the manager in the park certified, and they never respond to it. So I don't even know what to do with this situation, I just know that, you know, um, um, I'm old enough to fit to some of the other ones in the park, and, um, there's a lot of issues. And, and now it's becoming health issues, because now we're getting mold in our homes. And these are homes that we own, and we can't just pull them off, they're, they're like, uh, they're vintage. So I'm asking the city if there's anything they can do, because I know I've also heard that there might be a new project coming up to redo North Atlantic Gap, and, um, I'm hoping that maybe this time they'll fix it properly, so there is drainage. There is no drainage, so there's no place for this water to go except for downhill, and that means it's going right into my place.
Um, could I, what was your address, what?
Uh, eighty-five fifteen.
Eighty-five fifteen, fifteen, not fifty, okay, okay.
It used to be, uh, Cape Canaveral Mobile Homes, um, Johnny owned it, and now it's called Cape Canaveral Mobile Estates.
Okay, gotcha.
I knew the owner took it over three years ago, and he has not done anything since then.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Supposedly right.
I just didn't, couldn't understand your address, okay.
Well, I was kind of hard with this.
I didn't understand, no problem.
I just, I just had a quick question. Is that directly across from the Wagner Park?
No.
No, it's.
No, that's just one of the crosses three. I'm from the gated community.
Mayor, if I may?
Thank you.
Ma'am, are you, is your contact information on the card with a phone number or an email address?
No, but I can.
I'm, if you're getting ready to get that.
If you would get that, we would have the.
I'll buy your address, now, do you have an email or a phone number?
I have both, but if you want. Now, also, I want to make that apparent, too, my neighbor Lou Gray emails his department on the issue, and she hasn't heard anything about it.
Okay, what is your phone number, please?
Uh, six oh three, five oh five, one 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 one.
Four ones?
Yep. I used to work with all of them.
Okay. All right, thank you, we'll get it to the right people. Mayor, we'll make sure we contact her, we'll contact her. Thank you. All right, um, Daniel? Any public participation on the webinar, or is there any other cards or anybody?
Uh, no, sir, there are no raised hands for the webinar at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have our presentation tonight to Financial Department in the city. This is twenty-five years, twenty-year, uh, Financial Department has, that all castle certification is given to the city for twenty-five years of excellent reporting. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate you to you and your group for twenty-five years of excellent. That's by an independent, independent foundation. Thank you. Good to go. Yeah? Yeah?
No, I just wanna, I, I just say once again, you know, I, I know, it's been twenty-five years, Rowan, but these, these awards are really not gimmies, it, it comes from a lot of hard work and paying attention to detail, and adjusting to the constant financial climate that we, that's in front of us each year. And the folks that you see up here at the end of two thousand nineteen, these, this was the team at that time, Melinda Usier was the Deputy Finance Director, they heck of a job with our accounting, and Cheryl Palio with payroll and payables, and Candace was our new procurement, um, uh, procurement persons. So, but this team is the one that got us five for that year, and that helped us get the award. And now, our finance division, as you know, has changed, Melinda went on to be the H R Director, and now we've got a new accountant, Jenny, who's doing an incredible job. Candace has strengthened the procurement process, and Cheryl, this year, has been incredible with, uh, the software conversion, and, um, taken over the B T Rs when the B T R, uh, individual left, and now training the new person for B T R. So these individuals are very high-class, high-power, high, highly talented individuals, and we're lucky. And I'm lucky, I've got a very good team, but I want to thank these individuals, and I want to thank the entire staff, because these directors and these other staff members, you know, we ask a lot of them, and they always come to the, you know, come to the call and give us what we need, and we just keep the ball home. So I want to thank everybody, um, Tom, you got tremendous staff. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You guys are great.
Congratulations.
Okay, before we get into the, meet in the meeting, I'm gonna read an advisory that we have, we got the pandemic advisory, due to the COVID-nineteenth event, and then we, this meeting's being held both in person and virtually. As a courtesy to all of the attendants, this meeting should run until approximately eight o'clock and beyond, if it runs beyond, we'll have a short recess. But, uh, to go to the public participation, go to the city's website, W W W dot city of Cape Canaveral dot org, and you'll get into the, uh, process of how to get onboard. Our, our webmaster, Mr. Uh, Dan back there, he has got control of it, so for public record, all speakers, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone in order for your voices to be recorded and heard by the virtual attendees. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during the meeting, during the public participation portion of the meeting, click the hand icon on the upper right-hand corner of your screen and unmute your microphone. When it is your turn, staff will unmute you and advise that you are live. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, residence, and use proper decorum, the councilman choose to respond to your comment, and or move on to the next commentator until all have been heard. Staff will only be monitoring the raise hand function, the question function will not be monitored. Okay, we can move into our agenda. And we have for cons, consent agenda, we have five items. Does anybody wish to remove any of the five items? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Mayor, there are three items on consent.
I'm sorry?
There are three items on consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I have, I put five, I'm sorry. We get rid of this quicker than I thought. Okay, we have the three items, I'm sorry, um, anybody wanted to remove any of the three items? Number three by Ms. Cullen, okay. Anybody else? Not, can we have a motion to approve the items one and two?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made by Mr. Brown, and the second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, to accept items one and two on the consent agenda. Hold the roll.
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilmember Cullen? Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, back to item number three, Ms. Cullen. Mr. Dusmore, you want to answer? Yeah, John, come on up, this is the developer or the builder.
Hi, I'm John Dusmore, and we're building a house there. What you've got is you've got a fifty-foot lot, you've got eight-foot side setbacks, that leaves you thirty-four foot to build a house in. Your garage is twenty-foot wide, so it's just got too skinny. So when you have a tree like that, that's eight foot inside of the pad for the house, it's, it's gotta go. Another thing to take into consideration, if even that's out, five foot outside the pad, there's a good chance, after you get your house built, and you try to get insurance, the insurance company's gonna go on Google Earth and tell you, get rid of the tree, or we're not insuring, like having a trampoline in the backyard. That's happened to a dozen of my customers in the last year, that, you know, and once they cancel your insurance, you gotta go find insurance, and they know why you got canceled already, so you're, you know, so it makes it rough, so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Also, when you have a huge oak tree, you don't want all them roots under your house anyway, because that's where your plumbing is.
Right.
So somebody should take that into consideration as well. We hate taking down trees, I do.
Yeah, they're so.
You know, sometimes you just don't work on a fifty-foot lot. You know, if you had a lot that's a hundred foot wide, you can work with it and try to get it down. The lot that we have next door there, we have a tree that's literally three and a half foot off the property line, and you have no way to get to the back of the yard on that side of the house. And there's, there's limbs eighteen inches around over the top of the house, so, you know, I wouldn't want it, but.
Right. Okay, that was my only question, I didn't know whether, and like you said, because of the, the width of the lot, you have to take that into consideration, yeah?
Right, well, the narrower the house gets, the lot gets, the longer the house has to get, the longer the house, you know, there's lots, you know, they're a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars now. People just don't build twelve-hundred square foot houses anymore, the value of the lots too much.
Right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That was my only question.
Go sit down now.
You're good, thank you. Okay, anybody wanna, Daniel, do we have anybody out there that raised a hand on this issue?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Close the, back to the council, and, uh, may need to make a motion, we put this one away.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept this petition to take down the specimetry on three oh nine Madison.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, on item number three by Ms. Cullen, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, Angela Raymond, call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilmember Cullen?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, agenda item number four is an ordinance, oh six, twenty twenty, establishing alternative parking surfaces, second reading, Mr. Gargini.
Hey, Mayor. Ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty, ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Bubba County, Florida, establishing alternative parking surfaces, sustainable green parking lot alternatives, and bicycle parking requirements by amending chapter one ten zoning, article nine, division two, off-street parking of the city code, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. As you noted, this is second and final reading, also a public hearing item. There were a few, um, minor changes that were made between first and second reading based on council's direction at the last meeting. There.
Thank you, sir. Council? All the changes have been made? Do you have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, um, the minimum width of the space, uh, was ten, and we changed it to nine. Well, I, I don't remember why we did that. I mean, people that have trucks, nine-foot, or even S U Vs now are big cars, nine-foot is kind of narrow. Um, I know we had a percentage of compact car spaces, could we have those and, and make the other spaces wider?
Yeah, there, well, there's other reasons, and, and I'm gonna let Mr. Dickey grab all this one, because it was, it had multitude of reasons why that got changed around, and.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, if the council recalls, when I introduced this topic or this, this issue last month, I, in, I began my, um, discussion with the whole, um, the city's push to become more resilient and to become more sustainable. And one of the ways that, that is discussed in our resiliency plan, in our sustainability plan that the council approved here a couple of years ago, was to reduce the amount of pavement in the city. And, um, specifically to look at the dimensions of the, of the parking space, so that is specifically called out in our vulnerability assessment, if, if you recall that document. Um, and so this is really one of the first steps we're taking to begin to implement some of the findings and recommendations in the vulnerability assessment. Now, you'll be, the council will be seeing a lot more of, of resiliency-based, um, policy and ordinance changes coming up here. Um, but, um, but, but Councilmember Cullen, that's really the, the reason why is to, is to, um, uh, basically reduce the amount of pavement and asphalt we have in the city. Therefore, that spills and that ripples into less stormwater, that ripples into more green space. So, so there's, you know, it's not, there's, there's kind of layers of this. Um, also, I mean, and we can look at the practical side of it, too, I mean, I'm not gonna say daily, but weekly, we're battling with, with, in redevelopment, getting the proper and the, the number of parking spaces that, that we need to park a particular site. And because we're so developed, most of it's redevelopment, and it has choked a number of redevelopment projects out, because they just couldn't get the number of parking spaces that our code requires. And, um, I'm not saying a, a foot difference is gonna make the different, make a difference in every project, but there are a couple of projects that were right there on the border of, of, of having the adequate, not getting, having, being able to provide the adequate parking because of a couple of spaces. So there's that side of it, too, is, it's going to help redevelopment of our city because of, because of our location, because of the amount of develop, developable property we have left, it's, and the council knows, we're, we're const, this, you know, we're constantly being looked at for additional parking. Port is constantly pressuring us for that, and we're constantly pushing back on that, but, uh, but redevelopment's a serious, serious issue in the city, and I think it's, you know, to, to, and I know blight is an issue with this council. And the way we're gonna get rid of blight is we're gonna redevelop ourselves out of it. And, uh, we have to look for opportunities to streamline redevelopment in the city, and this is one of the ways.
I understand what you're saying. I went out and did some measurements, and you're talking about nine foot, a minimum width of nine foot. If you have, if you have a truck or an large-sized S U V, you basically can't open your door to, to two feet. I mean, it creates problems, if you're going line to line just to get out, you almost have to be, uh, just not, just, is there any way, when a situation like this, you said there are gonna be certain properties that need that extra, that extra, you know, extra foots or yardage or whatever? But on something like this, you can't do it on a case-by-case basis, you're talking, some places don't need it, some places do need it. When you're cutting down parking spots to nine feet, that is really, you don't realize how small that is if you come in a regular-sized pickup truck or S U V, you can't, somebody parks right next to you, you basically almost can't get out.
I have a little sports car, and, um, you should see the dings on the side of it from trucks when they park next to me in parking lot. So I, I feel the pain, believe me. Um, but, yeah, I mean, Councilmember Brown, I, you know, I, I, I don't know if I can, have an argument against that. All, all I can say is that this is not a mandatory, this is not, we're not requiring nine-foot spaces. We're saying if a developer feels like their project can benefit from nine-foot spaces, they can put in a portion of them, maybe every other one. Just trying to build some flexibility in here, and, and frankly, you know, we, we did a survey when this, when we initially proposed this concept a co, a year or two ago, and there are communities, I, I'm gonna say roughly fifty-fifty, um, percent of the communities that we surveyed were either nine feet or ten feet minimums. So not all communities are, are ten, are nine feet, I, I, I recognize that, and I agree. And it is gonna be an issue, uh, we do have a lot of trucks on the, on the road, and it's, it's an issue. Um, you know, and that's gonna be a policy, this policy decision by the council, it's, we're trying to create, we're trying to promote sustainability, we're trying to build in flexibility. Um, and we have to recognize that we're not a cocoa or a Melbourne or a Bubba County, we're a small, little beach community. And, um, we have to recognize that, and, you know, we're gonna have to look at things like reducing setbacks and, 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 uh, I'll, I'll, there's, there's opportunities for us to try to create more compact development, and that's, that's what we're gonna be bringing, bringing to the, to the council.
When you're talking about building, it's gonna make a difference between somebody being able to build and somebody not being able to build. I can understand it. But when you have a situation where a ten-foot or a minimum width of ten-foot could be applicable, I, I don't see any issue with it.
Mr. Mayor? Um, I think that what's important to recognize, because the issue is that, I mean, no doubt that nine foot smaller than ten, but it's a minimum. And so there's nothing in this ordinance that stops, um, if it's your home or a, a commercial, is I think what we're really talking about here. Um, I've used this example in the past, like Ace Hardware, I would argue that a hardware store, um, is going to see more trucks. Uh, venture to say that then, maybe, uh, on average than other places. I can't see Ace Hardware just from a profitability, it would not be a wise decision for, for them to now say, wow, we can get, you know, maybe three more spaces in here. I mean, those types of businesses are going to stick with their ten-foot, because you can go twelve-foot, I don't, I didn't read a cap anywhere. That's, that's where I would agree with it, and you do see some communities putting caps on, up in the Northeast, I was sharing this with the city manager, Dave, where they have actually impervious taxes on, um, spaces, and they're saying, they, they, they are mandating that shall not exceed. But what we have here is, as I think Dave said very well, is the flexibility to go down to nine feet, but we're not requiring them to. Um, and so that if your customer base, if your business is largely truck drivers, this code allows, just stop saying Ace Hardware, you, them to now say, we have trucks in our community. Um, fifty percent of my lot is gonna be ten-foot, they could say ten, ten percent of their lot is gonna be twelve-foot wide, correct me if I'm wrong. And they could say, and we're gonna allocate another percentage that's gonna be nine-foot, and, and, and this gives that flexibility to make sure that they're not creating those situations that I agree with you. Um, Councilmember Brown, because, you know, I've got a truck, and I understand what that's like. Um, I think if, if it, because we give them the out to have an adaptive, um, options opposed to the one-size-fits-all approach that we've done for years that boxed out, um, then I think that the opportunity now gives a business owner or a property the opportunity to allocate, you know, a variety of different sizes, and I would say, if I was that business owner, and when I read the Cape Canaveral code, I would make sure that I've got plenty of wide spaces in there to make sure, um, that I've, that I am, you know, not creating the problems that, that you brought up, so I hope that, I hope that happens. Um, yeah, that, that's my only comment.
Am I reading it wrong, Mr. Mr. Dickey? Does it say, um, um, does it say shall? I'm looking at something that says shall. Off-street on one-ten?
Yeah.
Dash four-nine, off-street parking shall consist of a minimum pay area of, of, uh, hundred and sixty-two, and at the bottom, the minimum width of each space shall be nine feet.
Yeah, it says the minimum width shall be nine feet. So I would interpret that to say, the minimum width shall be nine, or it could be anything above that.
Okay.
If that, if it didn't say minimum, if it said the width of each space shall be nine feet, then I would agree with you, then yes, Mr. Um, Councilmember Brown, that, that would be very restrictive.
The only, the only real advantage, and we're trying, of this the way it is, is we're trying to help the places that are too small of a area for the amount of business that's created by whatever that use of that problem or that property is. Otherwise, we shouldn't have any problems. I'm not in favor of making them mandatory of nine feet, but if it, and we made it ten, and I would like to, I know like, one don't fit all situation. And use this as a case-by-case thing, and if we can put a building on a property that we know is gonna be used for that use, and build it for that use, but the problem is, here comes Joe Bro with, uh, he opens up a gigantic restaurant, and there's only parking for a little real estate office to start with. And that's what the problem is, and we, we need to.
Deal with that, Mayor, all the time, as you know.
Probably, and that's what bringing this is about, but it's, but it's, it's the problem with, people use a property that the use wasn't there to start with, and we allow the use to go in there, and then it creates this problem. But when you build a hotel, you can generate. But when you build a hotel, you can generate 150 spaces or 250 spaces at 10 foot wide on that property. That should be a given, no take. It should just be a given. Put a couple of compacts in there, compact cars, I agree with that. But I, I drive, I drive a Tundra truck and anybody who knows, I park at Home Depot and I can't get out of my truck. I gotta park on, over the line to get out of it and leave somebody else with a motorcycle be able to park there. So it's, it's a problem. But as long as it doesn't take away our 10 foot as a given.
Mayor.
But that's, you know.
I could address that, Mayor. In my years with the city, building official and also as a developer in a previous life, general contractor, it is the, it is the duty and the seen as the, the right responsibility of a developer to maximize the square foot value of that site, every square inch. So if they can build with nine foot parking spaces, in most cases, they will build. There's no encouraging, well, it'd be nice if you went to 10 because you're, you're, you're Ace Hardware. They're not going to. Generally, 99% of the time, they're going to build to the minimum required. So consider that when we're adopting this change from 10 feet to nine feet, that that's likely what we're going to get.
No, I don't have a problem with it. But I'm just saying we shouldn't close the door on 10 foot.
We, we don't close the door, but this is what we'll get.
Yeah, you're going to get mostly all probably nine foot development. Because they want to maximize what they can maximize. But if they're only required 200 parking spaces and they're going to put in 250, they're going to have to do something other than 10 foot space. And why do they need 250? You know, we're getting into the, maybe, well, I like to put in 50 cars, cruise park.
Now, look at the case of a, of a restaurant, you know? I can get another three seats in my restaurant if I put one more space out there.
Yeah, if it's a restaurant. But then later on, if it becomes something else, that's where our problem. And, and you're not going to change a hotel into a restaurant or you're not going to tear it out of a hotel to build a restaurant. That type of thing. It's, it's, I don't have a problem with the ordinance, but I got a problem if we close the door on 10 feet. We should do that. Leave that for us. But that's what Mike was concerned about.
But in my interpretation of the ordinance is we're not closing the door on 10. That's the current.
But I'm saying if they can build and, and fill their parking at 10 feet and give them a percentage of compact cars, that's a given as far as I'm concerned. But I don't want to see everybody just, but I get, I get a lot of people complaining about parking sizes. I don't like them. I gotta do a three point turnaround to get in Home Depot to get in. Pull in, you gotta back up, pull in, back up, pull in.
Just as an example, I mean, let's say a project has 50 parking spaces. And rather than put in 450 feet of width of parking, we've got 500 based on the nine versus 10. That's 50 feet of additional asphalt concrete that we're going to have in our city. And, you know, maybe one project isn't a huge difference. But, you know, it's, 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 it's something to be considered.
Well, you got pervious in here. Pervious could be brick favors. How would you designate that parking space on brick favors with grass grown up?
Well, we're starting to spill over that other, our parking ordinance that, that deals with, if, if, if the council recalls, there's some language that says if you overpark the project, you're going to, you're going to be required to put in pervious, or excuse me, yes, pervious material. So we do address that elsewhere in the, elsewhere in the ordinance.
I just don't want the 10 foot right away, right to go away. No, they're not. I got no problem with it. To clarify your point.
I think the, Mr. Mayor, I think what, if we say that we're giving them a minimum of nine feet, like Todd says, most places are going to take advantage of the nine feet. And then we're going to have parking lots where people with SUVs or trucks are going to have a hard time getting in and out of their vehicles. So we set the minimum at 10 feet. Then they have to do the 10 feet and they can't go any smaller.
That defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, but I mean, doesn't the pervious parking help out with that?
Well, that, that only really kicks them when they, when they're overparking.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add? And I, I hear our city manager, but I mean, I don't, I don't know if, I mean, I would like to, to research that and that's in his personal experience. I don't know if that's the case, that they always take the minimum. I, I, I think that there's, in, in, in Todd's experience, I think that's, we've heard that that's definitely the case. But I'd be interested to see if that's, if that's how it's actually happens or if there's other ways that we can add stuff in to encourage it. You know, a parking best practices guide to consider is something that I just can't get past. Why a business would want to build a parking space that's going to upset their customers? I don't, I don't think that's how the world works. I think that we always, businesses have the customer in mind. Otherwise, they go out of business. They don't remain profitable. And it's, to me, I think that this, like you said, Mayor, this is, if we go back to the 10 foot, we're, we're kind of back at where we were in respect to that. I think this is a bold move in the right direction and we can, I, I have faith that you can encourage businesses to come to the logic of building above the minimum if, if they feel that it's, trying to find who the, who the victims are in this. And if it's the consumer, you know, we got, we live in America where a world where consumers drive change. And, you know, if it, Home Depot might be the 800 pound gorilla who isn't going to listen to, to Mayor Hoag. But I think our local community is going to factor that. But I'd just like to see, do developers, do businesses on average, always do the minimum? I, I haven't seen any data that, that says that that's what always happens. And Dave, I don't, I mean, you've been in other communities and you, you've been in the trenches on this one.
I mean, it's really, like, like I said, I, I think when we were doing this a few years ago when we first introduced this, we did a survey and we, we found that, that it's, it's a, it's, it's a pretty equal division between nine and 10 foot with wide lots. Now, you know, to the, to the degree of, you know, if there is a nine foot minimum, how many of those spaces are built to the nine foot standard? Wow, I, I'm not, I haven't seen that anywhere in my dealings with my, you know, with, within government. It may be out there. If it is, I'm not aware of it. You know, I've worked in places where parking requirements have been completely eliminated. There is no parking requirement and it works. People make it work. The market makes it work. So, you know, it's, 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 it just really comes down to what the council is comfortable with doing and, and, and what's the proper policy for the city of Cape Canaveral.
Just in reply to that one thing is, is what, what you just said, now I have seen the data on to back what you just claimed, that in these big cities, Atlanta, Miami, they've eliminated parking minimums, which kind of makes your head go, what? But it works. And so we're over here, you know, trying to wrestle with a foot. And if this council wants to review that data, you know, I, I actually think I brought it up in a previous meeting or brought it forward. If that works, then I think this would work too. That, that you see the builders build what's best for the consumers. And that data, I just want to echo it, I have seen. And it, and when I first read it, I was like, whoa, what is this? And it, it's actually became a huge movement in America. Cities all over the country are saying, man, we wrestled for three, four decades over a foot or two. Come to find out, if you don't put any minimum, which isn't what we're proposing tonight. We're proposing a nine foot minimum, but if you take the minimum away, they actually end up building what's best for the community. So.
I appreciate Councilperson Morrison, but I think the majority of business owners are in that business to make money. And I'd say there's, there's a percent that basically do not care about spaces or the customer. They're in it to make money. And if they can get more parking spots, that's what they're going to do. And I would say there's a good percentage of them that, that feel that, but they do not think about the aesthetics. All they're interested in is getting as many parking spots as they can, this, this drive, this drive this and drive wide. And there are, there are some Councilmen Morrison, I agree with them, do think like you're thinking that. Think about the, the customer, but when it comes down to it, they're in there to make money. They can get more people on their property. Majority of them, I think, are going to do that.
I can just say two things. The mistake, the reason is just, we got a lot of mistakes that have been made in the city over the years. That's, that's what really brought this to us was businesses have too many seats and not enough parking for that seating. So that's the reason this is here. Then again, until you look at the fact that, that the parking element is dedicated by the county, the city or whoever usually. And take Home Depot, for instance, they got nine space, nine foot wide spaces over there by 20 foot long. And they got half of the parking lot filled with equipment to rent. And they still have twice as much space as they need to park. You never go see that parking lot full. I'll fire, they go find it every quarter full. And they got half of the thing taken up with, did they consider all that when they built that? No, they just mandated nine foot spaces and there's probably 3,000 spaces over in that parking spot. So I don't care what you do, you're probably never going to find an answer to the problem. But you just, you go along with the flow and if we leave it at 10 foot and the builder comes in and he wants to build 10 foot, I would like to, yeah, you know, it takes away green space. If you go nine, you get a little bit more, let them put in papers or brick favors or parking papers, whatever. I don't think they'll ever do it. I've been on the city council probably 20 something years and this is probably the 10th time that we've been through the parking. And maybe 20 times with trees, I don't know what you said, never ends. I've seen it up and down from eight foot to nine foot to 10 foot to nine foot. Now we're going back down to nine foot again. And I, I don't know what to, it's up to the city council. I'm happy with the ordinance. We're, we're leaving the 10 foot space in there if it wants to be there, but it's up to the builder. Or we should encourage the 10 foot if they're going to be building a restaurant. Keep your restaurant seating comparable to the parking. Somebody wants to come in and rent this building and open a restaurant, you're going to have 40 seats in here. You better have 12 or 14 spaces after what's required. Otherwise, you don't open the restaurant. And that ends this kind of problem. It's just the way the city, that's how the past is, let it go rapid like that. Places are having problems. They weren't built for that. The land use was not for that idea. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I just have another question. On page six of 11, on the pervious parking. If we change the percentage.
Line, line number?
It is. It's, well, it starts at 26. If you read down, it says that 10% would be the pervious parking. Couldn't, would we, if we changed that, wouldn't that help with overall pavement situation? And made them do more pervious per parking spaces? Would that help, Dave?
Depends on how big the parking lot is.
I mean, if we made, if they, if they, if we made them 20% have to be pervious.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly gonna, the whole reason behind the, the pervious material is to get additional stormwater into the ground so it doesn't get into the, into the stormwater system. So, yeah, I mean, the more, the more percentage, the higher percentage we require, the, the more environmentally friendly it's going to be.
And from a developer's perspective, is, is that an advantage to them or would that be deterred?
I mean, most developers look at the bottom line. That's, that's, I shouldn't say most, that they look, that's a consideration. And my understanding is that porous material is more expensive than impervious material. And I've heard different 50% more, 25% more, 100% more.
Harder to work to label is harder.
Yep. So it, it, it is going to be more, the more, the higher that percentage we require, it is going to become more expensive to develop to our, develop to that standard. Now again, is that, that's a, is that a, is that something that's the council feels is acceptable and it's appropriate? You can, council can, you could put 20% or 50% or all of it.
You don't know.
But.
I just think let it go and see how it works and if we got problems with it, just look at it again. But the main thing is to keep the businesses, the land use, what it was there for now.
Right.
Not let somebody come in and go borrow a, a two space old real estate company parking lot. And that's what's happened with the. And then the shared parking, that's another killer.
Tell them what they can do with their property then? Do you tell them, I buy this land and now you can't do what people want to do?
Yeah.
Land use is a different story.
I mean, I, I think to a degree, we tell any, everybody in the city what they can and can't do with their property. You know, to varying degrees. But I, I think the public purpose that we're discussing here is making sure that, that, you know, these businesses have adequate amount of parking. And it's good for the customers, it's good for, you know, the owners, it's, it's, you know, it's.
What if we made it 10 feet and made them, and made them have more pervious parking?
Certainly a decision the council can make.
I feel that the staff has done a lot of work on this, planning and zoning has reviewed it. And I think that, that this is a good plan. I think that a business and a developer has some common sense and that parking has to go into the whole idea when he's developing his property. So I think that this is acceptable. Almost all around the United States, I've seen special parking for compact cars. That's a smaller space. And obviously, if you have a big truck or an SUV, you need a bigger space. So you will park in those spaces. So I think a lot of it has to do with common sense.
May I also comment?
Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment. I'm sorry. I, I just want to make sure Councilmember Kellum is under the right impression or has the right understanding is that currently, the, the only time, and Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong here. The only time that this ordinance is requiring pervious material is when they'd like a reduction of 10% of their parking spaces. And that's in, that's on page six of 11, under paragraph E1, E, EI, or E, yeah, EI, I guess. And then the other, the other one is on the next page, under paragraph two, when they overpark the site. They, they put, they're, they're requesting to put more spaces in where, than the code requires. Then they have, then they're required to put in pervious. This, this code is, is currently written, does not require all new parking lots to put in a minimum nu, a number or percentage of, of pervious pavement. That's, that's, I know we talked about that at the last council meeting, but there was never any, I'll call it consensus or specific direction on the part of the council. So.
Well, I thought that was the whole idea is get rid of the pavement in the city.
Well, we're trying to, we're, we're, we're trying to use a carrot and incentivize it in paragraphs one in particular. So if that's something the council wants to do is have a minimum percentage on all of our properties or all of our parking lots, that's, that's, that's not in there right now. So. percentage on all of our properties or all of our parking lots, that's, that's, that's not in there right now. So.
Yeah, and, and let's keep in mind that this entire program is about helping redevelopment projects. Um, when you're redeveloping, there's certain pressure for parking spaces, or, uh, some of them are gonna say, we don't have enough parking or there's not enough space on this piece of property for all those parking spaces. What can the city offer me? Well, if this were approved, the city can say, well, I can give you a reduction of a certain number of spaces if you put in a certain number of other spaces that are pervious. That's what that's about, to help that redevelopment pressure. The minimum parking width issue is separate from that. It does something else entirely. So there, there's changing the regulation. And we close the door, we open the new door, and this is about incentivizing and helping redevelopment, two different things happening here.
I mean, but the ordinance also provides an alternative sustainable green parking lot opportunity. So if somebody really had a parking problem, the manager would be authorized to approve, um, a sustainable parking lot in lieu of meeting any of the other parking requirements in the code. So that's the other, um, option, too, to get to the pervious type parking. You have the ten percent rule that they indicated, you have the other, um, the, the other, the other requirement for pervious. And then, um, you have the alternative parking design that somebody chooses to, uh, rarely go pervious.
Yeah, and, and I will say this too, that the.
Then, then.
They can go.
So it's clear, then all of the parking requirements that are standard are subject to being relaxed and waived by the manager. And all provided an alternative green parking lot is presented, right?
Yes, that, that, that is exactly correct, but, but I, I will just put a little caveat in that, 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 that those al- alternative parking surfaces, they can be used, and those are generally smaller projects. And you can see that the number of parking spaces required is eight or less. The use generates less than forty trips per day. So it's, it's, those are generally where that can, that can occur, what Anthony's describing is in a smaller, like a residential or a small office or a, it's not gonna be for a restaurant or a hotel or something.
And that's not what the ordinance says.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading on seven.
I'm reading one-ten-four-ninety-five, set paragraph A as proposed.
Okay.
City manager designate may approve alternative parking requirements in plans for commercial, industrial, multifamily, and mixed-use developments in lieu of the standard parking requirements set forth in the code as an incentive to encourage the construction of sustainable parking lots. Now, there's a host of factors, so some commercial establishment comes in and says, I wanna go totally green and pro- and really propose a sustainable parking lot in lieu of meeting the standard parking requirements about width, dimensions, and alleys and all that other stuff. Theoretically, under the way this is proposed, the manager would have the ability to try to make that work and waive some of the standard parking requirements to go green.
But would you say it's required?
I didn't say it was required.
Right, and that, that was the, that was the point I'm making. There is nothing in this code right now that says you will, you shall do this, you, you know, a certain percentage, or it's gonna be pervious. That's, these are all carrots that we're asking developers, hey, you can do this, you can do this, you can do this, if you put in pervious surface.
Do you think we keep the water out of the river?
Yes.
Um, I don't know, I, I'm, I'd be back to say, I don't have a problem with it. Keep the options there for everybody, and I'm, I'm sure people that will wanna do something will be looking at it real good and do it the best way for themselves, and if, uh, Todd being able to guide him down and David, no problem, we can really let it go. Have a problem with it, we can come back to it. You can always come back to the ordinance.
Are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
We're gonna need to public comment. I need to go to public person.
We're talking about a parking spot, so if somebody comes in and gets a rebate, right, right now?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown.
Somebody decides to get their parking lot repaid.
I don't think so. I think this is for, uh, no. Unless Anthony feels, no, you agree, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think it would, I don't think they'd have to.
Retaining his maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving through. Daniel, do we have anybody out public?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, it's closed public participation. If we're through discussing, we'll have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number six, twenty-twenty.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion by Councilman Morrison and a second by Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Raymond, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellen?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
And the next item is ordinance number oh-eight-two-zero-two, item number five, amending chapter ninety-four to sign code. Mr. Garganese, second read.
Um, ordinance number zero-eight-dash-twenty-twenty, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending chapter ninety-four signs, providing for amendments to electronic messaging signs, providing for amendments to section ninety-four dash one hundred and table ninety-four dash ninety-six dash one, to include sign requirements specifically for the public recreation zoning district, providing for the repeal of prior consistent ordinances and reservations and cooperation into the code severability and an effective day. This is second and final reading of this ordinance, it's also a public hearing item. At the last meeting, the council asked, uh, for a couple of amendments, uh, to the ordinance, those two amendments were made. Uh, one of the amendments was to strike the maximum height for the electronic display. If you recall, the previous version had a ten-foot height maximum, uh, for the electronic display component of a sign. In addition, there was discussion, uh, regarding electronic, um, signs and distance from single-family uh, residential development, or residential developments in general. And, uh, the suggestion within that Councilmember Morrison, which all the council members agreed with, was to um, tie, uh, some of that language to commercial or, or industrial zoning districts in addition to the public recreation district. So bottom of page three of seven, that language was added, when it was added, kinda looked at, um, the language a little bit with respect to the, the hundred-foot distance requirement. And, um, kinda tweaked some of the language about the potential exception. There is a general rule that, um, if the property is industrial or commercial or the commercial or industrial, put up an electronic sign, it has to be a hundred feet away from property line of any residential land development, unless, uh, the illumination generated from the electronic sign is adequately directed or screened in manner that the illuminance, uh, does not significantly trespass on the property of the residential development to create an annoyance or a nuisance. Which, we, if you, if you look and study a little bit about the electronic signs, they are direct light emitting signs, unlike a lot of the signs, if not all of the signs that you see along A-one-A, they're all backlit, most of them. So electronic signs are going to direct light more intensely than any other sign that you traditionally see. So, um, you need to account for the fact that they are direct light emitting versus backlight. So there's a potential that because of the direct lighting, uh, emissions come from those electronic signs, they have a potential to bleed under other properties if, if, if they're not directed a certain way. So, um, that's where that language came from, that's the general rationale.
Very comfortable.
Mr. Mayor? If, if I may, um, right there where, um, our city attorney left off on the illuminance, uh, I'm on page three of seven. On line, you know, I mean, that last sentence here, I guess, towards, uh, let's go line thirty-seven, page three of seven, line thirty-seven. Where it says, um, actually thirty-six, one line up. Unless the illumination generated from the electronic sign is adequately directed or screened in the manner that the illuminance does not significantly trespass on the property of the residential development to create an annoyance or nuisance. Um, I agree with the city attorney, and I think that, you know, that light pollution, I think, is what I've heard. And we've all, I think, been in those situations where you, that happened with my neighbor, you get glaring light, and we talked and they fixed it. And we had some issues in Harbor Heights, I think, that were brought up. But how can we? Um, the device that we use, our city manager was informing me on it today, with, that measures the candle lights or the lumens. How do we determine, uh, what annoyance or a nuisance is?
Mayor, if I could respond, there, there's a city code section, uh, I believe it's chapter thirty-four, uh, that requires that spill-over lighting, which defined is, uh, lighting that crosses that property line shall not exceed a certain threshold. And I don't remember what the number is, but it's a certain number of foot candles or lumens, it's a two-foot candles. So we have a light meter, I think we've got a couple of them that code enforcement uses, they're just a little battery-operated device. And when necessary, they'll go out there at night and measure the foot candles at the property line to determine if there's a violation.
Okay, so because the two-foot candles limit is there, that's, that's what this law would refer back to, obvious, okay.
That's the next one that can be on that.
And it's, I don't know what two-foot candles looks like, but is that an annoyance, or do you feel that that's?
Probably about twenty.
Okay.
Depends on.
Okay.
Hard to, hard to describe.
Got it.
I mean, the.
We had an issue with that in the city with one of the buildings that had a, but they're, you know, and, and they, they went measuring, there was, uh, they put it in compliance.
Yeah, we were, we were dealing with this two nights ago. We had a complaint on one of the new hotels, spilling, spilling over. And we went out and, uh, we're, we're gonna have to work with the property owner.
So you went to the property and it was giving you the deba-?
Okay, that's, that's where it's measured from.
That's, yeah. I, I mean, it's pollution, I mean, you, you should have the right to be on your property and not have glare coming in and on you, so that's good. Just wondering, it sounds like we got a great handle on that. Um, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Um, yes, I just wanted to, I know that Anthony had talked about this at the last meeting, and I, when I talked to, um, Todd about the, um, this sign ordinance, that we, we're still not gonna have the waving American flag, according to the way this is. Um, and I know that's a slippery slope. Um, but, uh, Todd was telling me if we, if we, um, lower it to, what were you saying, Todd? Two-minute loops or?
Yes, at the last council meeting, for the record, uh, the city council asked staff to look into animation, uh, specifically a limited animation. So perhaps an image of an American flag fluttering. Um, and that might be considered in terms of a number of seconds that it loops, or perhaps a certain number of frames that repeats or pixels in those frames that are showing different, lighting different, but, but just very small loop. We did talk about that, we, Dave and I met with a, a sign industry representative who we both respect, who we used for years, uh, as a sounding board for city codes and comparative, uh, purposes. And, um, what we found is, uh, animation is not very commonly allowed, um, at least around, uh, Brevard County. And that it's problematic to enforce, um, because animation is animation, whether it's for split second or a full minute. And then you, you, if the council wanted to do animation, uh, we would recommend that you in, put in, put in different prohibitions, stronger prohibitions than we currently have, such as no scintillating lights, no pulsing lights, no flashing lights. Because animation kind of brings all that to the surface of possibilities now. Well, that gets into an area of difficulty in enforcing what is scintillating to a property or it may not be scintillating to a code enforcement officer or vice versa. So for that reason, we're recommending that we do not include animation at this time.
We could have the flag just.
Correct.
That was my answer.
Yeah, do you?
I have nothing, I think it's fine the way it is, and, um, I agree, no animation, definitely, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to public participation, Daniel?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could interject one last thing, I apologize. Um, I wanna give, uh, due consideration of the reduc- reduction or the elimination of requirement. Um, something that we didn't fully talk about, I think, but just to put on the record was something to consider. If an electronic sign is at twenty feet high, it can be seen from much further down the road. And if it's lower, it can't be seen from much further down the road. And I don't think that got fully explored at the last meeting, and I just wanted to mention it to make sure we understand. If we strike that, electronic signs can be up twenty feet high and can be seen further down the road because of that.
So you're saying you wanna strike it?
No, um, we, the council has already stricken that the requirement that it be located in the lower ten feet. And this.
Okay.
Right. And just because there's a, a potential for, um, an impact on the view of the driver, say, on A-one-A, you might see more of these signs that may be acceptable to the council, that may be objectionable to the council. I just wanted to make sure there was due consideration given for that.
Yeah, well, when you got your, you know, the nets on it, like, it's called out here for the daytime, nighttime differential.
Illumination.
It's quite a, but, quite a difference. I know, I know, I don't know particularly much in the sign, but I know of a sign that I don't think, I think they must be burning at ten thousand nets at nighttime.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't need a street light down there, but, uh, out in the city, it's nice in the city. But that, that's, uh, that's an important feature, because at nighttime, they are very bright if they don't have that automatic control system. If nobody else has got anything on this one, we'll call for a motion, since we have no public.
Is public comment closed? I just.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's on public.
The, uh, the section where, did wish, wish truck, refresh my memory, the twenty-foot last time? I thought we. Right. Right. Okay, sorry, my head, my, my brain went backwards, I, and so the way it is today, because that's stricken, it can be twenty-foot.
Twenty-foot height.
Okay.
And we're in a twenty-foot height, you can put it.
Got it. Um, again, and Todd and I talked about that, and I think that with that device, that same approach to the annoyance would apply there. So to, to be clear, today, the way this is written, a twenty-foot sign can go up, it can have the animation as it's written.
There's a max, there's a maximum height for signs, which is twenty feet.
Mm-hmm.
The previous version of the ordinance would limit the electronic portion to a maximum height of ten feet within a up to a twenty-foot sign, so it's kinda, the electronic portion would, would be embedded in the middle of a twenty-foot, um, high sign. Um, the language, um, of ten feet maximum for the electronic sign was stricken at the request of the council at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So theoretically, now, if this ordinance passed, you could have a twenty-foot high sign and the electronic portion with the message board can go all the way to the top. And it will emit direct light emission from twenty feet rather than a maximum of ten. That will have some impact on the, how far the light will, will travel.
Is there a way that, when? Is there a way that when they're going to get that sign permit, I mean, that's approved before that sign goes up to get ahead of it, is that the process? So that we don't catch it after?
Councilmember Morrison, you're, you're referring to that standard at the property line of, of the foot candles? Generally, right now, what we do is we only, we require that for like parking lots, like parking lot lights, that's generally where we get a lot of our spillover from, from, from those type facilities. Signs, we do not, at this point, require what I would call a light survey or a light analysis. That's more on the backend, if we have complaints, we will deal with them on the backend. We, we don't have many complaints on signs in the city. I think we've had three or four since I've been here in six, for six years, but, but.
Yeah, and if I could add on to that, Dave, in, in the public right of way, most of the luminance, illuminance is gonna come from the streetlights out there anyways, not the signs. So while you're asking a great question about the, the extent to which we regulate is the extent to which our code enforces it, the other thing that I, I'm really trying to impart to the council is, there's an aesthetic component of this that has nothing to do with code compliance. It's about driving down that road and seeing all these signs because they're up high. If they were lower, you wouldn't see them, that's really the point I'm trying to drive home. It's not about code compliance, it's about aesthetics.
Yeah, and I think where I was going is, as long as we have a control on how bright they are, I mean, because I think we all, we don't want Las Vegas with these just glaring twenty-foot high lights, but I think the point that they're twenty-foot was when we say, but then they can see them, that's the whole point. I think that that's what the council and the mayor, I think, led this the last time, said is they, they, they need to be seen, but I think we, but if we contain how bright they go, that's why I was asking in the sign permitting process, is there an inspection in the bulb they're using or the, the lights, or do we wait for it to go up and then we, then we come in after?
Usually a set thing on, on a sign, electronic sign, when they, when they manufacture that sign, this person that they spoke to is very astute on city codes, I know her personally, she will look at what this ordinance says as far as the nits, which is the brightness.
Okay, so that's action on the nits, yeah.
That's what they will-
That's on page three.
That sign has an automatic system in it that turns that sign to that nit requirement up and down at daylight and sunset, so forth.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's two different brightnesses, or they can adjust it to any of that brightness within that. Their maximum is six thousand nits.
In the day.
It's in the daytime.
And then it comes way down.
Time, it's only thirty percent of what it is in the daytime.
Right, so does-
Thirty, yeah, thirty percent.
Okay, and does that five hundred nits concern you, Todd? If you don't mind me asking, Mr. Mayor, at night, I mean, because to the mayor's point, that's a pretty substantial reduction.
Yeah, that was an industry standard, as I recall, when we adopted that some ten years ago or more. And Dave, I don't know if you have any compliance issues, have you heard any about that still being too bright or that being too dim?
No, not, 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 not a number that would raise an issue, I mean, we have a, generally when we get a, a, a light complaint, it's because either a light's been improperly shielded, or there's not a shield on, on a, on a parking lot light, or it's come loose and it's shifted, and it's, it's very, generally it's a very simple thing to, to fix, but no, we have not had, the standard itself, I've not, I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Generally works fairly well.
Yeah.
If I was to go out tonight and you were to tell me where, what five hundred nits looks like, do you have a sign in mind, would it just be, or some of them below it?
Probably, I would think she's the one to put up the church sign across the street and put that up. I know several signs she's put up around the area.
And they're, they're all at that five hundred, are they she go below?
I would, I would hope so, if that's with our ordinance at that time.
Yeah.
If that wasn't bright enough, we would have heard about it by now.
Our city hall was the same thing, was five hundred nits, still sign at city hall.
Okay.
You get onto, you get on into Cocoa Beach and there's some down there that are exceeding five hundred nits, they can tell just by looking at it, way over. I don't know what their sign code relaxed you, do you have any idea, Dave? You check that?
I, I, no, Mr. Mayor.
It's way up.
It's, yeah.
The five hundred nits isn't bright, it's not that bright.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Dave a question. Dave, on North Atlantic, seven eleven put new signs in, have you seen them?
This one right up here?
Yeah.
Just north of city hall.
They're kind of lower and they have the digital gas price that changes five minutes. What, I mean, if we did, because I'm, I'm concerned about the twenty-foot high and, and looking like Daytona Beach or Las Vegas. Do you know the height of the, I mean, they're kind of, they're bright, they catch your eye, but they're kind of like more small town, townish than a twenty-foot high neon or flashing light? Do you know anything about what, how high they are or?
How?
I mean, what, what's your thoughts on a sign that like that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, as, as Mr. Morley indicated, it's really, it's, it's, it really comes down to an aesthetic standard, what the council is comfortable with. And as, as Anthony also indicated, the higher up the sign goes, the more visible it's gonna be and the brighter it is and the more animation that is allowed, the more, I'll use the word, it, it's gonna be more noticeable and visible. And so it really is, it's an aesthetic call by the council, what, what the council is comfortable with. You know, it's, I'm, I'm, I've seen, if you've been to Longboat Key or some of those places, the, the signs aren't lit and they're all probably four feet tall and they're all ground monument signs. And then you have on the other end of the extreme, so it's just really a, it's an aesthetic call that the council needs to make on what you feel is appropriate for the city of Cape Canaveral. It's, 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 and it will make a, I mean, it will make a difference. As I mentioned last time at the council meeting, it's gonna, depending on what you, full animation, twenty feet tall is gonna really make a statement as opposed to-
In a town that's one point nine miles long, we need twenty foot.
Wow, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a council, I would love to give you my opinion, but that is a council decision.
Do we have ten feet now? I think maybe ten feet with-
Twenty feet max.
Twenty feet.
Ten foot high is the electronic sign.
And, but I thought we understood no animation. That we have no animation.
That's, that's what we're recommending in this, this draft.
No animation, it's too distracting to drivers, especially at night.
Yes, so the simple question, I think, that we need to dispense with is, do we want electronic signs up to the full height of twenty feet or do we want to limit them? That's really the thing we're discussing.
I think we want to limit that.
We've been through this before and I, you know, I think it's, we didn't have any electronic signs, we had an ordinance against them before, no flashing signs, no portable electronic signs, no signs, backlit signs only, fluorescent signs, and then this ordinance came about with electronic signs. And we went through the, we went through the height thing, but the, the height of ten feet, you put a, you put a car in front of a sign that's only ten feet high and you don't see it from two blocks, three blocks away. And we had, we had all kinds of arguments, we went through the sign ordinance, it took us like, I don't know, if you remember?
Many months.
Couple of years before we finally jelled it together to work, we kind of agreed on it and whenever we come up with the electronic signs, immediately we had two new signs in the city that were electronic. And they're a cleaner sign, they're a lot lighter looking sign, they, they make a beautiful monument sign with the name of the business above it or below it or whatever.
I don't see the purpose of being able to see a sign two or three blocks away.
Well, we've had a lot of talk about that too. People say if you don't have a sign out there that you can see, you drive right by the business, you don't even know where the business is. There are all kinds of arguments, we can go on and on and on. And if you don't want to do it, fine, go to get it, but it, it should be one way or the other. It's always a, it's always a difference of an opinion on it. Me, I support bringing it to the ten, to the twenty-foot high because we, I went through the ten-foot high fight, I know what it was, I know all the arguments to it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can-
If you don't want to vote hard, go vote hard.
Yeah, so the other code, our sign code allows twenty feet, and so, and what we're talking about is that nighttime illumination, which we really tame down to five hundred nits, allows them to essentially glow. We really can't compare ourselves to Vegas. I mean, Vegas is a whole nother level, it's limitless, I mean, unlimited heights and the full, yeah, it's full-blown, paying hundreds of feet in the air, it seems like, and flashing and strobes and just completely free. We're talking about, our code is at twenty feet for a sign. And it, and then when we came in with this electric sign, we said, well, twenty feet, I think, is a, is a very, I'm comfortable with that, that's reasonable height, that's what it is today, and that's what I think the council's passed. And then now that, when we get into the type of sign, electric, you know, twenty feet, to me, it's not about three square mile city, or two square mile city, excuse me, I grew us there, it's about the, the twenty, if twenty foot makes sense for other signs, why wait in twenty foot? At a dim or five hundred nits makes sense, and I think it does, it's not overbearing, I think, to me, I think that, you know, if we had the full animation at that, yeah, I get that. But to say twenty feet and you can illuminate your sign, that, that to me, when you get in a car, it allows, it's more about the stretch, the distance, how far back that you can see that business coming and you can get over in the lane and get in the turning lane and, and get where you need to be. And I think we're, you know, we're, we're being reasonable with that, that height limit at, at twenty foot. I mean, I think the buildings are, you know, what, sixty, seventy foot, you know, sometimes, and then the sign is limited much lower than the building height. And so I'm, I agree with the mayor on this one, I think it's something that we're, we're being reasonable, we're not taking it to a Vegas or a iDrive level here with the, the five hundred nits limit and treating the twenty-foot digital sign just like our other signs, I think it looks, it will look nice.
Spring Hill, no sign is nice, I don't know if anybody's noticed.
Yeah, yes.
Clean, neat, not bright, not flashing, it's just, it's just a, it's a nice sign. If they all were like that, well, we could get all of them to make them not nice. They, each had a nice sign, and the church across the street's got a nice sign, they, they incorporated into a, a different body, that's fine, it looks good. So if we're through, we'll just do a motion.
Fine.
Anybody else got anything else before we?
I'll work here, it was open.
Yeah.
We moved public on this one, didn't we?
Right.
Yeah.
You already have.
We closed it and come back.
All right, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move to adopt ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for ordinance zero eight twenty twenty by Rep. Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Morrison. Call the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Against.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, or six, I mean, appointing a voting delegate and an alternate to the Space Coast League of Cities. And we have Ms. Raymond and Rocky Rendles. Has anybody talked to Rocky about accepting the?
Not speak with the mayor, did you speak with him? He does have a lifetime membership there.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess, we'll go ahead and do it that way if you want.
He enjoys it.
Oh, yeah, I know.
He enjoys going and-
He likes the pies and the cakes.
Since he has the lifetime membership, since he was the past president in nineteen ninety-five, and everyone knows him, this is something that he lives for.
Yeah, right, but sometimes, you know, he's not here, so.
He, he gets the agenda and the packet, so he's, he's on.
We'll go ahead and do it, if he does, we'll come back with it next time.
If there's no objection, I'd go ahead and recommend that Rocky and Mayor Pro Tim Raymond stay in the position they currently-
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
You'll second it, okay.
Yes, I, I, I enjoy it and I think that I, I feel that it's fulfilling work.
Okay, we have a, by Mr. Brown, appointing Ms. Raymond to the Board of Directors and Rocky Rendles as the alternate, and we have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we'll have the item number seven, and it's a discussion item on the city ordinance regarding required sidewalks, and this is Mr. Morrison, correct? Yeah, Mr. Morrison.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the way our, our code is written, that a sidewalk, the responsibilities of the sidewalk are on the property owner in the event that there is no sidewalk and they're developing or building a, 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 a project there. And to me, I've thought about this one for a long time and chatted with various staff members through the years, and I wanted to just put this on, I hadn't had a chance to talk to council about it, and, and say, you know, sidewalks are for the people, for the public. And the simple logic, the easiest way I can put it, is if it's for the people, I think it should be paid by the people, not by the person. And that's what I think this code does, is it, it requires one person or one party to pay for a sidewalk. This has been brought to my attention, it was brought to me pretty early, back when, after I was elected, and I, I didn't hear too much more about it. And then it was brought back again by two, one of them's on Pierce, one of them's on my street, Harrison Avenue, where they had to build, and they said, oh, I found out that I have to fund all the sidewalks that go through there. And so figured that, you know, we want to be a walkable, bikeable city here, and the, the will is there for us to build our sidewalks, we build sidewalks every year, it's in our plans, we, we move forward with that. And when you drive around our city, you can see where the new development went in, you can see where the new sidewalk was built as complying with our code, and then you look to the left and the right, there's two houses that's been there for years and there is no sidewalks. And that tells me that this code, Mr. Mayor, you could probably help me when this came about, but, you know, if I'm that person building a home, I've got, you know, I'm paying for the sidewalk for everyone to use, and, but then my neighbors have houses and they don't have sidewalks built in. I just feel that, just morally, it doesn't feel right to me that, that, I think that sidewalks are like very close to roads, they're a core function of the government, and I think if we just stay on our path and the budget to get the sidewalks done, but to put this, this responsibility back out of our fund, out of our budget, our general fund, that was it. You know, I got a few questions, but I didn't want to belabor this, I know it's the end of the year, it's been one hard year for sure, and I just wanted to see if council would be willing to maybe have staff take a look at what some other cities are doing, and also I'd be interested to see what the citizens, you know, give us some time to talk to some citizens and think, I can't imagine one citizen who's ever, or a residential developer who's ever had to do this, who's excited about it, you know, having to, to fund, to fund the construction of the new sidewalk. I don't think that, and, and like I said, I've had two who, who've brought it up to me and I just, even if no one complains- and, and like I said, I've had two who, who've brought it up to me, and I just, even if no one complained about it at all, when I just read it, it doesn't seem like the right approach. So that's all I have. And I, I'd love to hear from the, the rest of the council, your thoughts on this particular section of our code.
I, I have some comments. I've lived all around the United States during my married life. And I also go back to thinking of my hometown, which was about five or six thousand people at the time, East Aurora, New York. And it always was the responsibility of the homeowner to take care of the sidewalk in front of their houses, even if it needed to be maintained. I remember specific cases where there was some problem, maybe with a sewer line. But then the, actually, the residents had to take care of the sidewalk. And I've seen that to be true every place I've lived. So I.
And, and that was what I wanted to, that's your experience, but I wanted to see if council would see, what's that? Is that true today in, in Brevard County? Because I, I haven't seen the data. I don't, I don't think that every city does that.
I'm not sure, but I would ask.
Also, if that's true, if that's been the experience, and we find out that the private party is responsible to buy the sidewalk, then why, right now, when you drive down our streets, do you see a house without a sidewalk paved in front of it? Then why aren't we knocking on that property owner's door, sending them a fee and saying, you've got to build this sidewalk? I can show you several houses where new, right here on Harrison Avenue, we can't see, where the new home was built, that new one that was just built on Harrison, they complied with our code, they put it in, and then to the right and the left, there is no sidewalk. So that's my point. If we're going to do that approach, which I think that we do one or the other, we say, you know what? Every citizen is responsible for their sidewalk. But the way it is today, some luck out when the sidewalk comes by there and it gets paved. And then some kind of get a, a bad hand because they built new. And if you build new, you got to fund your sidewalk. But maybe if you wait long enough, the city's going to come through and pay. It just doesn't seem very unfair and equitable, so.
Can I take one of those? You know, rough, I don't know, as a builder, how much of a hundred feet of sidewalk, how much are we talking about? Just rough the bill? And how much are we putting on the city coffer to put a hundred feet of sidewalk on somebody's residence?
Typically, the sidewalk is poured at the same time as the driveway and the apron. So there is a, um, an efficiency there because it's done at the same time. You're not calling out a special small load of concrete and paying extra charges for that. Um, I'm not quite sure what the cubic yard cost is anymore, but, um, let's say if it was, you know, five dollars a foot, a hundred feet, that's five hundred dollars. That's probably, you know, reasonable amount for the concrete that goes in there. And you've got some labor perhaps on that. And this is just very, very rough numbers. Maybe you've got a thousand dollars into it for a hundred foot long, perhaps.
Um, I, yes. Uh, I think I agree with, uh, Councilman Morrison. Um, I think that would solve the hit or miss on sidewalks through our city. Um, and I know we do budget money for sidewalks. I, and I think it's part, it's part of what we pay for taxes in our city, like roads and sidewalks. And we are a bikeable, walkable city. Um, I would be interested in the staff looking into it more and, and figuring out, you know, how we could make it better, more feasible. You know, if someone lives in their house for thirty years and never has a sidewalk, that's really not fair to somebody that builds a house next door and, you know, has to pay for their sidewalk. Um, I just think that it's worth looking into and figuring out how we can make it better for everyone.
So, um, Councilman Morrison, you're, so you're requesting that, like, houses that were built a while ago that currently do not have sidewalks, that the city possibly come in and pay the sidewalks that were never built to make it better. That basically what you're.
Uh, uh, should they pave the sidewalks that aren't built? Well, that's a budget question. Um, I'd love for that. If we vote on, I, I think that if we could wave a magic wand, yes. Um, I'd love to see all the sidewalks built, but I understand that our budget may not allow that. What I'm saying is that, that all sidewalks that are constructed are on the responsibility of us, not one property owner. That, that, that's the way right now, our, our ordinance, the majority of sidewalks are on ours.
I think you could, I, I may stop you just a second, but, um, over the years, back when Cape Canaveral wasn't incorporated, they had no sidewalk requirements. The streets were assessed to the, to the owners, property owners. That was the street paving. The sidewalks, Cape Canaveral didn't even put any sidewalks in. They didn't even require you to have a driveway. You, you'd see a lot of yards where they have just a concrete strip going up and a no apron. It runs across the sidewalk if there's a sidewalk there or there's no sidewalk. So over the years, everything kind of was just a mishmash of, if you wanted to build a house with no sidewalk, fine. You didn't need a driveway, no fu, no driveway, no. But over the years, the, the city started putting ordinances in place to aesthetics. Uh, yeah, I, I have driveways right across the street from my house with no aprons, but they got gravel for driveways or they got whatever. Then the ordinance came up to where the contractors, when you build a house, this was, I, I don't know, maybe six, I don't recall the dates. You build a house, you put it in the driveway, you put in a sidewalk. Contractors expect that. That's their onus when they build a home. Of course, the price, the, uh, the cost of all that falls back onto the, who owns the property and who's developing it or whatever. Then we found out later on in life where we're putting in sidewalks in front of houses that are developed already and in front of houses that aren't developed. Let's take Pierce Avenue, for instance. Main, mainly all fully developed, but you might have a house or a lot or two there that's not there. Okay, the, the last time that we worked this ordinance was two thousand and three, I think it was. But back in nineteen eighty-six, we worked this ordinance to put the onus on to the property owner who owns that property at that time. If the city puts a sidewalk on that vacant property, that owner at that time of development would pay the impact fee of that property, of that sidewalk that the city put on their property. Now, the people that don't have lots, I mean, that have a, let's say they have a house and they don't have a sidewalk. The city puts a sidewalk in front of that house. The city is not charging that owner that owns that house for that sidewalk.
Right.
Because he didn't build that house. Well, that's my opinion of it. That's where your city of alarm tax will go to work for that owner.
And that's where I feel that it's kind of off sided, that it needs to be one, that, 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 that house that's construct, why does the, the house that doesn't have a sidewalk in front of them is okay, but the new house must have it. That's the, the problem. That, and this gets back to, um, Councilmember Brown's question is, so in your example, that the existing structure gets the sidewalk paid by the public general fund, right? But if that, but if that lot is vacant and we build it, then we, when somebody goes to build and get their certificate of occupancy, we have the ability to impose an impact fee on them. And if it's my understanding, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you know, through the years you've been serving, have we ever imposed that impact fee?
Not to my knowledge, because the, the ordinance says it's a may, which means it's not mandatory. Um, every one of those by ordinance would have to come back to the council for a resolution. I don't recall that ever happening.
And so that poses a very good question. If, why have we never imposed that? And I think that that's getting to the help, and I like that we've never imposed it, because I don't feel that it's right. We have the teeth there to do it, but that, to me, can become a bit arbitrary, the fact that we can. You know, but the fact that the will this council never has. I'm proud of that, that we didn't come back and say, hey, we, Pierce Avenue is an excellent example. There's a vacant lot there. We just built sidewalks there. We have the ability that if that gets developed, to go back and impose an impact fee. But in the past, we haven't. And so, why does he, you know, that's where I feel like it's a little upside. We need to go, as Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tim Raymond said, either just straight across, everyone pays or not. But I feel like we can knock these sidewalks out when the budget allows, but to take that, put, the, the city budget absorbs that. And so, I didn't want to move and strike through the impact fee or propose an ordinance to do that. I didn't want to, um, you know, change this. I just wanted to learn what the other cities are doing and, um, let you know that citizens I spoke to don't like it. It, it, I, I, I don't know anyone who would like it. I can't. That's where I think the burden is. Go find someone who does like it.
I think you're missing a point, Councilman Morrison. Uh, the people who have lived in the city for a long time, I'll take Harbor Heights for example. They've been paying taxes all along, so they've been contributing to the city budget for sidewalks eventually, because they've been paying taxes on their homes. So there's where the difference is. The person and the developer building the new home and the new residence, they haven't paid any taxes to the, up to this point, correct?
That's not, that's not always the case.
Just think about this a minute. Just follow me. Follow them, follow my logic. Follow my logic. They haven't put money into our city budget by paying taxes. Some of these people paying taxes for forty years. So there's, it's a big difference here. The people that are developing that property, that's their choice. They're opting it. And they're putting the sidewalk in. It's just a normal thing to do. And it's done all over the country.
And it's not done all over the country.
Well, if they don't, if they don't, if they don't have sidewalks, some people don't have sidewalks. Or some cities choose, for example, to put sidewalks on just one side of the street. For example, when I lived in Manchester, Missouri, I did not have a sidewalk in front of my house. And it was a brand new development. The sidewalks were on the other side of the street. So if you took a walk in the evening, you cross the street to walk on the other side. But some of the developments had sidewalks on both sides of the street. So it does vary. It does vary. But the difference, that's the big difference, is that the people who have paid the taxes for this, and it goes into the budget, and then they get that benefit of having sidewalks put in. And eventually, we're going to get those sidewalks put in. I'm sure we're going to do it with this council. We're going to get those sidewalks put in.
But there's people that, that move into a house that haven't been paying taxes, and they will never have to buy that sidewalk. I could go buy a house right now in Cape Canaveral, right now, on a house that doesn't have a sidewalk built. And I've never paid one dollar into the system. And next week, a ta, a sidewalk gets built. I never put a dollar in, but I get the sidewalk.
And if it's a brand new house, they're going to put the sidewalk in.
No, I'm saying in the example, you're assuming that everyone lives here and pays taxes. That's not always the case. Everyone isn't like Mayor Hoag and, and, and Mickey, who's been here thirty-five years paying taxes. Uh, excuse me, Councilmember Kellum, Lamar Russell, and, you know, these are.
What do you mean? What? I don't quite understand. You're saying I'm paying taxes?
Let's take an example. Someone who, Mayor Hoag sells his house to someone. Mayor Hoag's been here longer than anybody. He's been paying taxes to prove your point. Let's say he doesn't have a sidewalk. He's been waiting on his sidewalk, you know? He, well, this is further. He doesn't have a sidewalk. And he's been, he's been waiting, he's been paying to the system longer than anybody. And he's been waiting. Maybe he doesn't want a sidewalk. I don't know. But he's saying, hey, I've been paying, it's coming. I could, some person who doesn't live here could buy Mayor Hoag's house. Now, he never paid in the system in his life. The next day, the sidewalks come through.
That's right.
And Mayor Hoag said, I've been waiting on that for seventy years. And so.
You're comparing apples and oranges, though.
All I want to do, Councilmember Raymond, look, I agree.
Mayor Pro Tim, thank you.
Excuse me. It's an honest mistake. Uh, the, the responsibility to buy the apron, I agree with that. That, that's the driveway. That, that makes sense, that of course the develop, the, the builder's going to build the apron. And even the sidewalk that goes right there, uh, between the, the end of the driveway and the apron, I'm in support of that. But it, I love Pierce Avenue because it, it's a great example. When you, that's a corner lot, and that sidewalk just stretches. And I'd love to take, uh, Councilmember Brown's question and apply it once we learn the foot. That's going to be a pretty heavy bill if we impose that impact fee on him. That's a long run. So it's all, it's all not the, kind of equal. I, I just wanted to see what other this, what other cities are doing and, and, and say, hey, is it time that we take another look at this? And the fact that we've never imposed that impact fee tells me that the conscience is there, that it doesn't feel like it's the right thing to do. I just, if you drive through the city and you see no sidewalks in front of the existing house and, you know, if there's a compromise, that would be great. You, you buy the apron, you buy the sidewalk, but all the other linear feet comes back out of the general fund. And we'll get to it when we, when it's voted on as a priority in the budget, so. That was it. If council, you know, everyone hadn't had a chance to discuss, I don't think, Mr. Mayor, but if, if you're looking.
I'm going to answer a question if you're through with us.
I am through, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Morley.
Yes, sir.
How much imposition would it be on staff to go back into this ordinance and look at the questions that have been brought out due to this ordinance? To get the answers like, how many houses have been built with a sidewalk that's been in place? The, without the impact fee being paid, like Mr. Morrison's question. And how many, how many places, well, it's hard for us to tell how many places have had a house sitting there that we don't have a sidewalk in front of them to be, and if they're new owners or old owners. So that would be kind of hard to. But to answer that question as far as the impact fees that this city's put out on sidewalks, I don't, I really don't mind. I just can't really run around and, I'd probably go find a house to.
It's, it's a difficult question to answer. One part of it would be simple enough. If we could determine what year the, the code imposed that requirement, we could simply go to the property praiser and say, how many single family residential homes have been built since that year?
But then you have to go see if there's a sidewalk.
Well, assuming that they complied with the code and the building official did his job, made sure they didn't get their CO until the sidewalk was done. If we made some assumptions, we could come up with a number of houses that built their sidewalk, roughly. But then the question comes back to, well, what about the sidewalks that the city has built on properties that were developed before and still that are not? That becomes more problematic to answer. Perhaps the simplest thing to do to, if it's council's wish to dispense with this for tonight, we could simply task the staff with doing a, a survey, see how prevalent this practice is. And that, that might help quell some of the anxiety about this. And, uh.
And what other cities are doing, maybe.
Yes, that might help.
But, uh, if I, if my memory serves, it was around eighty-six, eighty-seven that we posted it back, the on sidewalks.
I, I was looking at Councilmember Morrison's request today through some, uh, historical documents about, you know, ordinances that did this, and, uh, and it was a good search. One of the things that I found was that, uh, the, the impact fee one came in, um, helped, helped me, Councilmember Morrison, was it, uh, two thousand and three, I think it was. And then the previous one that you requested, I sent to you, I think, was nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay.
That said, thou shalt construct a sidewalk when. that said, thou shalt construct a sidewalk when, you know, get your, your, your house built. Um, you mentioned, Mayor, that there was some requirement in the eighties, I was not able to find that, although that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, it's just I was not able to find that in the time that I had. So we, we know that this requirement's been on the books for well over twenty years, approaching at least twenty-five, it could be more. So I think that's more of a moot point, I think if the council directs staff, we will certainly take it under uh, direction to, to do that research, come back to the council with how prevalent this practice is. And that might be a good place to put a pin in it, at least for now.
I don't have a problem with the way it is, but to answer the questions that we've had, I think, council's whole issue, would you do it, or would you just bring this forward with emotion, vote it or not vote it? I know there's several questions, but I can see that, I can see both sides of it, but there's not really a true answer to both sides. See, how you can correct that problem, other than just, you just give everybody a new...
And we are talking about the single-family residential only, and obviously, um, commercial properties, that's a, a site plan requirement, you have to, you have to show it and develop it as part of it, it's off-site. It is for the public, but we make the commercial development, build the sidewalk, the, the hotels out here, for example, they have to build the sidewalk at that time. So wanting to limit this to only single-family residential or multifamily residential, how far do we want to look into this?
Why them and not me, or why them, why me and not them, you know, it's a fact.
Right.
As a commercial, it's A1A, anyway.
On A1A, you're, you're correct about that, but say the ones on Central.
But we have some areas that are, yeah, right, I'm saying we do have some areas that are under the commercial. And do we not obligate them, or do we obligate them?
We do obligate them.
No, I'm saying, do we, if we change it just residential, you're not obligating, and everybody walks on the sidewalk regardless of whether they're...
Mayor, if I can, um, my, my understanding, or my not understanding, is what, what you're saying, Councilman Morrison, is, um, like an, an house, a new house comes in, he puts his driveway in. Um, if, if he waited for the city because of our budget, and I know there's sixty-five thousand dollars in the budget right now for sidewalks, designated for sidewalks. What if he lives on, and, and we had talked, Todd had said, when we were talking about the budget, that, you know, for the coming year, we would like to start at the presidential streets and do each one each year. So if he lives on Washington, um, or, no, if he lives on Adams and we're doing Washington, and he doesn't, we do the sidewalk, is he going to have to wait till we get there to do his sidewalk? You know what I'm saying, if we're doing each street in a budget year, or whatever? Um, is the new owner, if we take care of all the sidewalks, the city?
Yes.
Will he have to wait until the city gets to that street for his sidewalk to be?
Yeah.
Is that, am I making sense? You know what I mean, Todd, because we had said that we're going to put more money towards the sidewalks in the coming budget?
Yeah, we'll continue to do that, as a matter of fact, that's something we're going to see at, um, the next strategic planning event, which hopefully will be, we will be able to have this next year, a presidential streets neighborhood plan that will deal with more than sidewalks, but include element, the element of sidewalk as well.
So if we did it that way, is what I'm saying, would that guy that he, he, he's on Madison and they're starting at Washington, is he going to have to wait for his sidewalks until the city gets there?
Yes, like everyone else has to wait. And, and that's, you know what I mean?
Right.
And peop- and, and it took me a second, I'm like, you know, like the mayor said, um, before ninety-seven, thank you for finding that, you know, houses were built without sidewalks. And it's not the end of the world, you know, that they're okay, I think we all agree as a council, we want to have sidewalks and we want to finish it when it, when it makes sense. But, um, yeah, they would have to wait, and, and I, but I, I think they would build their apron to their dri- I mean, they'd have to meet all those building requirements, and I think that that, that would cover a small chunk of what would be, I think, the sidewalk. I don't think we'd want that disconnected, but yes, um, we'd wait as long as much as, you know, we make it a priority.
That I waited for some.
But if you're building a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, it, we're talking a thousand dollars for the sidewalks, and this is something that is normally done, though, by a developer to begin with. So I think that it's a normal thing to have a new home and to have a sidewalk in front of it. That's a normal thing for a community, and it's a positive thing for our community. It's a positive, this isn't a negative. I understand your point about fairness, but I do think it's something that is generally done today.
That's just what I want to verify.
Generally done.
I, I think that it's worth the staff's time and the, um, to look into it, uh, especially for the budget, upcoming budgets, I mean, if we had more knowledge on where we need sidewalks and who, what, where they are and where their need is, it would help with budgeting as well.
Are we talking about doing a survey of other cities?
Um, see what they're doing in, in a, in a budget, I mean, I, um...
Just to, to, let me make sure I understand, um, we want to find out how much they're budgeting for sidewalks?
No, I, I thought we were talking about our city. Who, where we need sidewalks, um, who hasn't paid the impact fee, that kind of thing, so we know.
Nobody's paid, no, yeah, we haven't done that.
I mean, I remember that ordinance like it was yesterday. I, I mean, I remember, I, I, I remembered that ordinance, I remember some of the discussion back in twenty-three. Was it two thousand and three, seventeen years ago?
Yeah, way back before that, way back.
I remember Councilman Petzos at the time discussing the sidewalk dilemma that Cape Canaveral has. And the dilemma Cape Canaveral has, most, most communities will make developers pay for sidewalks as part of new development. In Cape Canaveral situation, you just have infill lots all over Cape Canaveral. So your new development, developer comes in and builds one, two, three homes sporadically in various places, then they have to put the sidewalk in. But nobody else in the neighborhood has a sidewalk.
Exactly.
So part of the discussion on the impact fee was, well, the city has limited resources, how, how can the city possibly generate additional money to build more sidewalks faster? That was my recollection of that, check the record. And that's where the impact fee ordinance came, because it's trying to expedite more sidewalks. But, you know, in, in seventeen years, that impact fee was never been used. But it's not going to, regardless of what you, what you discuss, you're not going to eliminate the infill problem that the city has, you, if you're going to want, if you're going to want to build sidewalks in existing neighborhoods, relying on infill developers to build a little sidewalk here and over here, it's patchwork. Your sidewalk will never get built. And you're going to have, you know, fifty feet of sidewalk to nowhere, and, you know, the rest of the street with, with no sidewalk, unless...
Most of our streets are, and the, the residential are built out.
Right, that's my point, they're built out, so...
We got to just fill them out?
This, the, the city, the city would have to step in and, and build the sidewalks, which raises the funding question, how do you want to do it?
We spent probably twenty years filling the north-south arteries, getting it filled in maybe about five years ago, six years ago. We finally got all the north-south arteries, arteries both sides of the street, one hundred percent paid.
But, you know, the concept...
But now you got the, the infills.
The concept of having developers pay for the sidewalk for their development project is extremely common. The impression that you get that it may not be fair is because you've got this infill problem, and some are, some developers are paying and existing neighborhoods are not, and the city may come in in the neighborhood and actually put in a portion of the sidewalk and pay, right, with general fund dollars. But the other person, developer, had, had to pay for their portion of the sidewalk, so it may give the impression of an inequity. I think that's part of the discussion that you're having, um, but they, it's not going to resolve the problem of in, installing sidewalks in a developed community like, like Cape Canaveral has in various neighborhoods, unless the city council takes the initiative and, and does it and funds it. That's just, that's my opinion from my cheap seat. Um, you don't have the luxury of, I'm behind glass. You don't have the luxury of new subdivisions being built where, you know, thousands of linear feet of sidewalks can be built at expensive a developer. I mean, that time happens back in the sixties and seventies. And now you're retrofitting. Just my impression.
But it, it, it is an improvement, I think, it's an improvement to have.
Just keep working, do what's needed at the time.
Yeah, you're chipping away at it, and the developers are helping you chip away and infill lots. I don't know.
If I got serious with it, we would, you know, maybe wipe it out. And it may not make sense to do every street and every place, I know people that don't want sidewalks in front of their lots, and I get it, so it's...
Harbor Heights, as one of them says, Harbor Heights.
Yeah, don't... And don't lose sight of the fact you have, you have, because these neighborhoods are built out, while you may have the will to build the sidewalk, you may not have the property to do it. So you have to acquire easements, and we have done that. I've done a few easements over the years when the opportunity has presented itself for the city to build the sidewalk. Um, but, you know, God knows, you know, if you want to do a whole street, how much land acquisition through easements from property owners, you know, would be required. I mean, that's something that we would have to really look at, and might be a delay or an impediment to doing the sidewalk. Because you don't want, people don't want it.
Right.
Or maybe there's one or two holdouts and you have a Swiss cheese effect, and you have to decide whether you want to go and do sidewalks in front of fifteen neighborhoods when three of the lot owners won't give you an easement, then what? I mean, you'll...
Yeah, it would be good to just maybe bring this back when it makes sense, at least, and to say, talk the bigger picture on sidewalks, you know, having one sidewalk, at least on one side of the street, I think we all want, right? I don't, I don't think any of us wants to put a sidewalk on a property owner that doesn't want it, but we, we, we want to get to this happy balance, and I don't like the head-down tunnel vision approach of just no sidewalks down it, I think, um, Davis used a term in the past, pocket community visioning, where you really focus, I love that approach.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make one comment, Mayor, and I'll make it very brief. Uh, Todd, and as Todd mentioned earlier this evening, he has tasked our department with coming up with a, a neighborhood plan, particularly for the presidential streets. And a brilliant important component of that is going to be sidewalk plan. Uh, we already know where the sidewalks are and are not in this, in the presidential streets. And this, this effort that Todd has asked us to complete is going to, uh, make a recommendation to the council uh, through the adoption of the plan on, on, um, uh, what sidewalk improvements need to be made in the presidential streets. And the council will be asked to, and it'll have a, a part of that will be, I'll call it a capital improvement plan to fund these public improvements in this, in this planning area. So the council will be involved with deciding where the, where the priority is going to be as far as the sidewalks. Uh, we'll be bringing projects to you, at least I'm envisioning this, we'll be bringing, uh, design and construction projects to the council, and you'll be involved in that on, on new street improvements to include sidewalks. So I think there's a, a plan that will be coming to you that will answer a lot of these questions, and frankly, the city's going to be responsible for bankrolling most of the, most of these improvements. Um, um, so, so I know it, I, I, we're pushing it off a little bit, but I think there is a solution coming, coming to the council.
And I've enjoyed, thank y'all for talking through this, I think that that's a good ending. If there's one question that would, that I go home with, it is, as our city attorney, it's that inequity, that the fact that we started kind of on the wrong foot, which is what all cities do, we evolve, we learn, and we're, we're kind of living through the times, we're seeing a time that maybe in thirty years, no one will ever even talk about. But, yeah, that, that's, um, it's ugly right now, it, but once it's all developed, it's good. So if, you know, if staff researched anything, if there's any proposed solution, if this council's willing, on to overcome that inequity, that, that balance, if there's a way to make that developer that comes in and they, they, they build a lot, but they're both of their neighbors, it's the sidewalk to nowhere, it literally is just their lot, no one else. There's several instances here. If we can answer how we overcome that problem, maybe there is no good answer, that's where, I think, that's why I've been wrestling with this, um...
They can do the sidewalk on the whole street where it builds, that's the answer.
Build the whole street?
Do the whole street, make, figure it out.
I think, I think that this is a good discussion, but I wouldn't lose any sleep over it. I really wouldn't, but it, it really is a good discussion, and I mean, like I said, I've lived around the United States, so I think I have totally different view because I've been all around, so.
Let us look at, find out, Todd, basically, what other cities are doing as far as their sidewalks, you know, impact fees or whatever, that information that we, we need, and, and, uh, we'll bring it back and look at it again.
Okay, so to clarify...
The new system or the new program that you got working with, maybe enlighten along what's going to be in that to help us get through this?
Just want to clarify the request, um, consensus of council is that staff does a survey of other municipalities in Bivard County to see if they require sidewalks to be constructed by the developer, and if not, do they require, or do they have an impact fee program for city-constructed sidewalks, and bring that information back to council? Okay, we can do that.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's up on eight, it's past, a little past eight o'clock, I was trying to get us out of here, buddy, because we have a restroom break, but if you want to run through and close the meeting, if we're through, we're through to discussion item, we'll close the meeting, we'll go to reports real quick, and we'll get out of here, and we won't have a restroom break. All right, uh, anybody have anything they want to say? I don't know who to call on out there, that Mr. Dublau, he's the only one I have. But anyway, we'll go ahead and call the meeting, uh, go ahead and let's have our reports, Nikki, you want to do a report?
Sure. Um, I would like to just say, um, it's been one crazy year. It, um, I'm glad it's going to be over soon, and we can look forward to twenty twenty-one and getting all the activities back in our city, I know the residents are really missing Friday Fest and, and the other, uh, things we do in the city. Um, and then I, I'm going to bring up the, uh, that, the thing that nobody wants to hear about is trees, again. And, um, I was just, I found out about, uh, the Arbor Day Foundation that we're a member of, and that we're a city of trees, and I did some research, and I was hoping to get consensus from the council to direct the staff to find out more information about the Arbor Day Foundation's initiative for, um, Time for Trees, it's called, and they have a goal of, uh, by twenty twenty-two to plant so many trees, it's the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Arbor Day. So I was hoping that in the city, as a city, we could do a goal, set a goal. Um, there's lots of resources with the Arbor Day Foundation, um, if you become a member, they give you ten trees for your property. That maybe we could get the citizens involved in that and get them to, um, join up so they could get more trees for their yards. And, um, maybe make it a goal, um, some kind of celebration for twenty twenty-two where we get the children from the school involved, or, um, you know, maybe donate, the city could donate trees for their, um, the city, you know, their lot, or, but I just would like, you know, consensus from the council to, to pro, to promote the membership to Arbor Day and, um, trees, we're losing lots of trees, I got, um, a report from uh, Public Works on how many specimen trees we've taken down in the last two years, and there was a lot, and, um, I know it's necessarily evil sometimes, and they die from, um, you know... And, um, I know it's necessary evil sometimes and they die from, um, you know, hurricanes and, and that. I lost all the trees in my yard. So I'm hoping to get those 10 free trees. But, um, I would just like the consensus, if we could start now and maybe, um, promote more planting of trees in our city, uh, through the citizens and, um, the residents.
I do get, I get thanks from Arbordale. Uh, we, the city is a tree city.
Right.
But we have Arbor Day, we do have an Arbor Day also. We just planted a tree in library or pet tree park.
Right.
So that's. I'm sorry.
We had several.
Oh, yeah, I think we plant them, we plant them every year with school. If the school kids come in.
Right.
They usually, Manatee Park, when we did, uh, Manatee Park. Uh, Banana River Park, we had a big, we did, all the kids planted all the vegetation over there. The one day we had that over there.
Well, I just think for the 150th.
I questioned the specimen trees. You said we took down an awful lot of them. I don't recall too many that we've taken specimen trees.
Yeah.
I don't know how many, how many did they give?
They gave me a stack of them, like this many, a lot.
Many years.
Two.
Do you have a number?
Um, no, I don't offhand. I had, I had it at home.
I don't know whether it's probably been a specimen tree.
Well, they took out, I mean, they.
No, there's been a lot of spec, there's a lot of specimen trees were taken out that weren't under the permitting stage of what we have today, like, like Maggie's Nursery was nothing but specimen trees. Or Bella Damar's app.
Right.
That was destroyed over there. But this, I've been in the west, 10 years or so, 12 years, I don't, maybe eight that I can remember.
Well, I just thought if we could, right. I just thought if we could do an initiative in the city that encourages the residents to either, you know, look into joining the Arbor Day Foundation and get 10 free trees and.
And planting oak trees is a good thing, but it's a bad thing. Like you heard, your insurance, you know, you're from the building.
Well, there's a lot of other specimen tree, I mean, not specimen trees, but.
Right, that's, really, they're beautiful trees. I love mine, but I kind of wish I never planted it. Now it's cracking my driveway and certain destructions. And I don't know what's going on in my house, but.
If you're asking to, to set a goal for trees.
Exactly.
Yeah, and to the, to the right trees, you know, dogwoods, not oaks. If we can get better and leverage the knowledge of the staff and harvest that we have and, and just get better at the tree game, for a heck of better words.
Right, and set a goal for.
It's, no one likes taking out trees every time. It, it's just the situations sometimes that happens. But I think we all get excited about planting new trees and the city doesn't have a goal I, that I'm aware of. And so if we set a tree goal and if it's in these plans that are coming, that's a good thing, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's what I wanted to mention, what Councilmember Morrison is talking about. Our, our draft resiliency plan establishes goals for tree planting. So I think, there again, I sound like a broken record, but there is, there is some information that's coming to the council that, that will address the specific issue.
Well, I was kind of talking about, you know, we have the mayor's fitness challenge. Can we have the mayor's tree challenge? You know, and, and set a goal for how many trees?
Review it?
Take my tree if you want.
The next meeting?
If you have it, I'll give it to you.
No, I mean, if, you know, the residents let you know how many trees they planted in their yard or, you know, I don't know.
Review it in, like, the January meeting? I mean, the program, I think if we can all review it and then we can all weigh in.
And, you know, for the, the hundred, uh, the 150th anniversary of the Arbor Day is in, um, 2022. So it, it could be a long range goal as well, you know. But I'm just, I just thought it would be nice to get the residents involved and, you know.
Good idea. Maybe we can have the citizens plant, uh, you know, for multi-generational sort of trees all as a, you know, a city group or some citizens.
Because we are the city of trees, so, yeah.
Project.
And if you don't want a sidewalk in front of your yard, you're getting a tree.
To, to be clear, I'm recording council consensus that staff come back with, looking into some kind of a program which encourages tree planting. If there was like a mayor's tree challenge thing, kind of a thing, we could encourage our residents to do at their own residential properties.
Right. And, and, you know, maybe publicize the Arbor Day Foundation through the city that if you join the membership, they give you 10 free trees.
Got it. All right. We'll get, we'll get that back to you.
And that's all I have.
On this January, but we'll shoot for January.
Thank you to the staff. You guys did a great job through this crazy year of keeping it all together. And that's all I have. Happy anniversary, I mean, happy anniversary. Merry Christmas. Happy anniversary.
29 years yesterday.
Happy Arbor Day. Covering all the bases. Okay.
All right. I've been doing Space Coast League of Cities and we've been doing free conference calls. And we are not going to have a meeting in January. It was supposed to be in Palm Bay, but our people voted unanimously that we would continue with the free conference call or Zoom. And maybe in February, maybe in March. And the lawyer did say that, um, we could take the oath of office for the board via Zoom. So that was one of the, one of the problems that we had. So we'll see what goes on. And normally speaking, the people come from Florida League of Cities, the new president. And, um, it's Ortiz from Orlando this year. And they usually come to Rock Ledge Country Club when we have that in February. But it doesn't look like we're planning on having anything until everybody gets a vaccine and we can progress. Anyway, so we are just going to continue with Zoom. And the priorities for this year, of course, are going to be vacation rentals and affordable housing. Some of the top priorities going to, um, the legislature. And we'll be talking about this when we meet in January. That will be like the half meeting in January for Florida League of Cities. So I will be going and participating in the Transportation Policy Committee meeting. And the first priority this year, after three years, affordable housing. And I'm very happy about that. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. Please stay safe and sober. And unless you're at home. And at home, you can do anything you want. And, uh, happy, happy holiday season to everyone. And I already wish Todd a happy anniversary.
Your honor.
That's it. And thank you to the staff. You've done a great job.
Drinking and driving.
No, no, drinking and staying at home is fine. You could have as many margaritas as you possibly want. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison, go ahead.
Yep. Just want to thank staff, first responders, everyone who's put in. It has been one tough year and, and I want to thank this council, each one of you. We may not always get along. We do get along, but man, we got through, I think, that, that hopefully that heavy part of COVID. Mayor, I know that's probably not what you wanted to hang your hat on is having to get through that. But through it all, we're all here today and, and we got through it. And I just want to thank you. I'm hoping, I know the vaccine's out and, and, um, we know that if it comes again, I think, you know, we kind of made history. We had never been there before. And so, um, I wish that upon no other council member, but we got through it and thank you for, I think everyone approached it and pursued what we thought was best. And I just kind of reflect in, in over the year and saying, we made it through, thankfully, and hopefully it's behind us. And we'll continue to go forward and, and keep trying to do the next best thing for this community. But Merry Christmas to everyone. Looking forward to happy holidays. Yes, probably happy 29 year anniversary. I just turned my birthday, which was cool, relaxing. Got to spend time just with my daughter and family. But, um, one update on the, the Florida League of Cities Advisory Committee, the Natural Resources and Water. We've been attending those, um, on that board. And to echo, uh, what Mayor Broten Raymond said, the priority for that, um, advisory committee is water this year. It's all about water. So clarity and I think Cape Canaveral is on board with that. And I will bring back that report and, and I don't know if I'll be going up, but I've just been attending the meetings and it's new to me. There's only been three of them so far, but I look forward to, to getting my feet wet and reporting back on that committee as well. But, um, thank y'all. That's it.
From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank staff for everything they've done this year. The hard work that you put into this year with all the issues that we, that have confronted us. I want to thank our first responders. I know you've got the holiday season coming up. And I pray for each and every one of you for the hard work that you're going to be doing. I want to thank Gustavo for the excellent job that the city did for the reindeer run. I think this was my fourth or fifth year out there passing out water. And it goes before good cause. Didn't it go for the police athletically, the majority of the money? And it's definitely well needed for the kids in our neighborhood and other neighborhoods also. I want to wish each and every one of you the best for 2021. Be safe and I look forward to our January meeting. Thank you.
Very good. I don't have much to, I did miss the reindeer run. I apologize. I was, uh, my 49th year anniversary and I was spending that with my wife. And we.
Wow.
Had a quiet day and everything, so. I, otherwise I would have been there for sure. I thought mama time was a little more than, than that. But anyway, uh, I don't have much, uh, I did, I did have, yeah, I did, uh, I met with Commissioner, uh, Byron, Brian this morning, Ryan, Brian Lober. I say Ryan, I got a neighbor named Ryan, story. We talked about him a lot today too, because, anyway, I met with him about a couple initiatives with the city and the county. And then Todd and I met with him, I took him to Todd, we met. And we had some good discussion on, on the CRAs and improving what we can do, maybe more with, and I'm going to let Todd tell you more about that, but. And, and I, I went mainly about Sheraton Park because we've been working on that for 20 years to try to. And, and Commissioner Lober, he has no problem with us taking that part. And he has no real strings that he's attaching. So we're, we're heading still that direction, but hopefully we can work all the other little things out. But, and I, I talked to him about CARES Act money, which we have gotten our good share of it. And he kind of has a whole lot more he wants to get rid of. So I directed him into the areas of the volunteer fire department and taking care of those guys that are volunteers and so forth. So we had, we had a good, I was with him almost three hours today and we went and met with Todd and, uh, discussed things with Todd. And I'm going to let Todd tell you all the in and outs about what we talked about with Todd.
I would just, um, be very, a little careful about talking about the specifics of Sheraton Park because we don't want to create a sunshine issue for the, for the commission. This is an issue that will go before the commission. But I will say that, um, Mayor and I were very, um, heartened by Commissioner Lober's approach to Sheraton Park and the city's position. I'll be going over that with Anthony, our city attorney shortly here. So what we'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll respond to their draft and their local agreement. And I think that we, we may find that the terms work out to mutual benefit of both parties. We did talk briefly also about CRA. Commissioner Lober is, is a fan of our CRA. He, and he, at one time, one time used the word poster child for CRA and referring to the city of Cape Canaveral. He also says that we're, we're one of his favorite jurisdictions to work with. And I think, these aren't his words, but these are mine. We're low drama for the commission. He appreciates that. It was a very productive time and thank you, Mayor, for bringing him by today.
I don't know that many else, other than, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Guys in green over there, be safe. They'll, they'll, we'll do a good job for us. Thank you. Anybody, staff, anybody?
I just wanted to say that the giving tree is going fantastically this year. The heart and spirit of the residents and citizens of Cape Canaveral is just unbelievable. It's better than it's ever been. And I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And thank you, council, for all the confidence you've given to me and the staff. And thank you to the staff. You guys have done a great job. Public Works making the decorations here, the I Am staff, oh my gosh, it's amazing. Lisa Day is responsible for this beautiful room and what she's just some amazing things too. So great staff. Merry Christmas to all.
Okay, meeting's over. Thank you.